Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Preliminary Budget Hearing on Higher Education. At this time, can everybody please silence your cellphones? If you wish to testify, please come up to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk to fill out a testimony slip. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach today's, I repeat, no one is to approach today's. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, Chair of the Committee on Higher Education, and proud CUNY alum. Welcome to today's hearing on the city's fiscal 2025 preliminary budget for the City University of New York. CUNY's fiscal 2025 preliminary budget totals $1.3 billion, which includes nearly $900 million in personal services funding to support 6,024 full-time positions and $370.3 million in other than personal services. The budget is $180.6 million less when compared to fiscal 2024 adopted budget of $1.4 billion. The difference is mainly the result of the expiring federal stimulus funding of $112.4 million in fiscal '25. While CUNY's overall headcount has not drastically changed over the last several fiscal years, it is expected that as more students return to the classrooms, the number of pedagogical staff will lightly increase in the future and thereby require the infusion of additional resources to support the increase. In fiscal '25, CUNY anticipates generating $415 million from tuition and fees, close to $273 million from state grants, and $13 million from non-governmental grants. The preliminary plan does not include any new needs for CUNY. However, budget actions increased its budget by $4.7 million in fiscal '24 and decreased it by $17.6 million in fiscal '25 compared to the November plan. The importance of CUNY to the economic mobility of thousands of its students and the city by extension is clear. At today's hearing, we will examine its budget to ensure that the institution and the students it serves receive adequate funding and resources to thrive. We would like to focus on several topics, including the funding changes included in the preliminary plan, the impact of the loss of federal stimulus funds going forward, spending on capital projects. In addition, we will review CUNY's vacancies to ensure that they have not impacted operations and programs. We will hear from CUNY on critical programs like CUNY Reconnect, ASAP, ACE, and MetroCards to ensure that they can continue to be available for all students. Lastly, we hope to hear from the university on the impact of the council-funded initiative on its initiatives, on its operation, and on student services this fiscal year. Before we begin, I'd like to thank everyone who has joined us today and acknowledge Councilmembers Marte and Brewer, who are here with us. I want to thank our committee staff for their work, including Carolina Gill, Florentine Cabori, Regina Paul, Sahar Marwazami, and my Budget Legislation Director, Adam Starapoli. And before we hear from you, I will swear you in. Please raise your right hand. From Wendy Hensel, Hector Batista, and Sharif Soleiman, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember's questions? Thank you. Before beginning your testimony, please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Chair Dinowitz and other members of the City Council Higher Education Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. I'm Wendy Hensel, Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost for the City University of New York. I'm joined today by CUNY's Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer, Hector Batista, and CUNY Senior Vice Chancellor for Budget and Finance and Chief Financial Officer, Sharif Soleiman. I want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams and the entire City Council for your steadfast commitment to CUNY, our mission, our programs, and most importantly, our students. Over the past two years, your support and that of Governor Kathy Hochul and the State Senate and Assembly have been critical to the important contributions CUNY has made to New York City's rebound from the pandemic. CUNY is embedded within the lifeblood of New York City. More than 80% of our 50,000 annual graduates stay here, diversifying every sector of the city's workforce and contributing to every aspect of economic and civic life. CUNY alumni in New York account for about $70 billion in annual earnings. That's close to 5% of the state's GDP. When you consider their increased future earnings and tax revenues that they produce, each taxpayer dollar invested in CUNY returns a benefit of at least $15 to New York State. To quote an editorial in the Daily News last spring, "Every dollar in is a dollar that is magnified and keeps New York's economy humming along." Our campuses also act as anchor institutions across this great city. Throughout 2023, our outreach programs and initiatives directly engaged 50,000 community members through educational workshops, health clinics, cultural events, and volunteer activities. We have strong partnerships with the New York City Public Schools, businesses and industry, and nonprofits that address community needs like job training programs, literacy campaigns, and environmental conservation efforts. We are deeply committed to our role as an engine of social mobility and are building a strategy to make our university even more impactful as an agent of change and economic engine for the state and the city. Last June, we unveiled an ambitious strategic roadmap called "CUNY Lifting New York", a detailed plan for bolstering the already profound impact that our university makes in the lives of our students, their families, communities, and on the city region and state. Both our roadmap and our fiscal 2025 budget requests focus on four goals. They are: One, be a national leader in providing access to higher education for diverse populations of students. Two, improve our ability to exceed predicted student outcomes and eliminate academic equity gaps with innovative curriculum and support for our world-class staff and faculty. Three, advance our community through comprehensive research, engagement, and service. And four, modernize the CUNY system. We've experienced many recent successes already advancing this strategy, including fixing long-term flaws in our transfer system by ensuring that students who go from a CUNY community college to a senior college receive full credit for the first two years of classes taken within the major, saving them an estimated average of at least $1,220 in tuition and significant time toward graduation. Launching a $10 million initiative to get CUNY students more paid internships that are embedded in their degree programs and providing new internship opportunities to 4,000 students. Adding 115 fully online, high-quality degree programs across the university this last year to provide access to working adults and those who need flexibility in order to obtain a college degree. Securing $638 million in external research funding, a record amount this last fiscal year. And working on a wide-ranging transformational capital projects that advance CUNY's core educational mission, including the recent completion of the state-of-the-art $95 million nursing education, research, and practice center at Lehman College. And finally, confronting hate and taking steps to combat antisemitism in all of its forms on every front, including partnering with Hillel International, launching a portal for community members to report incidents of hate and discrimination, initiating a campaign to promote students and employees' right to request religious accommodations, forming an advisory council on Jewish life, building a new diversity, equity, and inclusion hub on our website, and distributing $1.3 million in state and city council funding to the colleges for trainings, events, activities that address religious, racial, and ethnic bigotry. While our accomplishments with your support have been laudable, our continued progress in lifting New York is challenged by the $94 million in pegs that have been imposed on the university and are now set to be baseline. We have worked tirelessly to mitigate the harm from these pegs and preserve our academic mission and reputation as a leading university. However, the negative effects of the pegs for our students, our academic programs, and our colleges are now widespread and unavoidable. My colleagues with me today will discuss the specific impacts on personnel and operations across the colleges. I'd like to give you just a few examples of how our key academic programs are being affected. We've reduced city funding to support our K-16 programs with the New York City Public Schools. Tutor Corps, which supports STEM teachers in middle and high school classrooms by providing one-on-one tutoring, now serves half as many students as a result of losing $1.1 million in the last two fiscal years. As a reminder, when pegs are implemented, CUNY not only loses its direct funding from the city, but we also lose program funding from our city partners who are managing their own reductions from the pegs. The FY24 baseline funding for our accelerated study in the Associates Program, or ASAP, remains stable, and we thank you for that support. However, our Accelerate, Complete, and Engage, or ACE, program, which serves 2,800 bachelor-degree students, seeking students per year at a cost of $7.1 million, is not included in the mayor's preliminary budget. Our ACE program achieves a four-year graduation of 60% versus 41% for a matched cohort, reducing the actual cost per graduate by 13% after accounting for the $2,500 per-student investment. Because these funds must be sought each year and are not baseline, it is difficult to manage vacancies, which are often paused pending the next budget cycle, resulting in higher advisement caseloads and fewer students admitted to the program. CUNY also lost $2 million per year in funding to support developmental education last year, slated to meet the needs of those who enter CUNY unready to take college-level math and English without additional support. The decline in funding affects the amount of co-requisite support available and may jeopardize the critical progress we have made to ensure that our underprepared students have a clear pathway toward college-level coursework. And finally, we have paused some of our professional development programs for these faculty who have experienced challenges in teaching in the wake of pandemic, especially in English and math developmental courses. As these handful of examples reflect, the pegs have led to reductions in instructional and student services staff that directly affect student progress to degree completion and higher earning ability. Reduced staffing has affected academic advisement, counseling, library staffing and hours, career services, and student financial aid offices, among others. These effects are now magnified by the fact that many students who are now enrolling with us have significant learning delays and intense needs because of the pandemic and thus require more support than ever. Chairperson Dinowitz and members of the committee, the university community deeply appreciates your continued commitment to a high-quality CUNY education, and this concludes my testimony. Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista will continue with his testimony.
Thank you, Wendy. I echo my colleague and thank Speaker Adams, Chair Dinowitz, your colleagues at the higher education, and all members of the City Council for consistently recognizing the value of CUNY. Your commitment to ensuring our resiliency is greatly appreciated. I also want to acknowledge CUNY trustee and Chair of the Board of Finance and Administration and former City Councilmember Henry Berger, who's joined us here today. You heard from our provost, from our student demographics. Let me begin this testimony today with a sense of our faculty and staff demographics and the gains this administration has made in diversity, equity, and inclusion. We've seen an increase in women and minority employees across many of our faculty and staff classification. According to a three-year workforce demographic report, the three-year trend of full-time instructional staff shows the increase in the percentage of female and minority faculty. A three-year trend shows an increase in the percentage of minorities, faculty, heal, serious, ECP titles, and reflects an increase in the percentage of women in faculty titles. Employee ranks of professors have increased in percentage of minorities and women by 9.7 and 8.3 respectively. And the growth of lectures and instructional titles is most evident in the total minorities with an increase of 38.3%. While we are proud of these gains, we're facing difficult financial challenges. Our obligations are exceeding our available resources, so we are faced with a structural deficit. The primary factor contributing to the structural deficits are enrollment declines, unfunded mandatory costs that the university has had to absorb. As we seek your support in this budget cycle, it's important to begin by summarizing the steps that we have taken and continue to address the structural deficit. University-wide, we're taking steps such as instituting higher fees, applying across-the-board saving targets for this fiscal year and the previous one. We're working with the colleges that are exhibiting fiscal distress to achieve additional savings reductions through expenses reductions, opportunities to generate revenues. Our actions combined with additional state aid has led to our social deficit to be reduced by more than half from two years ago, from $232 million fiscal year '22 to $107 million according to our latest projection in this current fiscal year. Our strategies to continue to reduce the structural deficits do not only include college-level reductions. We also implement various statewide shared services strategies to achieve additional savings and streamline operation. Among these strategies is centralizing IT functions to benefit the economy of scale, pursuing more effective deployment of maintenance and repair teams to the campuses, and to consolidate contracts to negotiate better pricing. Our efforts are now limited to expense reductions. We also focus revenues that will help us stabilize the university. We continue to implement enrollment retention strategy to ensure that the student's success and their educational journey will continue. Those efforts have led to uptick in enrollment that has helped increase revenues to the university. Although there's an enrollment uptick, and it's really welcome, it's not enough to counter the nearly 15% decrease in enrollment compared to the pre-pandemic. While we have a comprehensive plan to tackle these structural deficits, achieve this fiscal stability for the university, the plan is strained by the effects of the several rounds of baseline pegs. It was a welcome news to hear the cancellation of the third peg, but let me put the pegs into some perspective. The baseline pegs for fiscal year 2024, the now total is $94.1 million, and is estimated to grow to $95.5 million in fiscal year 2025, will continue to prevent CUNY from progress movement. To put this in perspective, the culminating pegs of $94.1 million is 15% of the entire city contribution to the operating budget. CUNY is an organization of people, so naturally, much of the operating budget, about 85%, is dedicated to personnel services. Community colleges are down over 400 positions, or about 7% compared to headcount levels fiscal year 2021. Let me provide a few examples of the impact of personnel reductions. At the Borough of Manhattan Community College, we have 72 vacant positions. They include faculty, student support service, buildings and grounds, instruction and administrative support personnel. These vacancies have caused students delays in academic navigation, which relates to student retention and success. At Kingsborough, we have a total of 51 full-time positions that are currently vacant. They include faculty, lab technicians, financial aid personnel, bursars, registers, office, and custodial service. Additionally, academic tutoring, academic lab hours have been cut back. At Horstus Community College, 77 positions have been cut. In the Student Development Enrollment Management Division, there has been no replacement of vacant positions, and student support service, financial aid, admission, advisement, there are 10 faculty lines that are vacant. The IT department has also suffered, creating a real challenge when it comes from a cybersecurity perspective. The impact of these reductions, coupled with the programmatic impact outlined by University Provost Hensel, demonstrates how these pegs have directly affected our student progress, degree completion, and higher earning ability. But I would also like to highlight another aspect of the pegs that cannot be overlooked: facility condition that are critical to the overall campus environment. Facility conditions are an important part of the student progress, recruitment, and retention, also CUNY's ability to attract, retain, high-quality faculty and staff. So we are working hard, dynamic master planning exercise, to bring CUNY's critical buildings to system and state good repair. As part of that work, we have completed a university-wide facility condition assessment. This will give us a better perspective, system-wide, building-by-building level of the conditions of our facilities. It would allow us even more efficient allocation of limited resources that we're getting. But planning alone will not suffice as long as the pegs prevent us from maintaining the required level of facility staff. Now I'd like to turn to the capital budget. CUNY is home to 300 buildings across New York City, encompassing 29 million square feet of classroom, lab, theater, athletics, and more. These spaces are vital for our students, our faculty, and the communities we serve. We're seeking $333 million in capital support. These funds will allow us to preserve the university's infrastructure. We capture the spaces that are underutilized, improve our technology, and meet our energy conservation goals. The funds will ensure that we can continue to serve the region with graduates trained for high-demand positions in science, technology, mathematics, teaching, and nursing. In conclusion, we respectfully request that you restore the pegs to enable us to continue to move CUNY forward. We know we're an engine of social mobility, and we provide that, and all our students are able to take advantage of that. The downstream result of less investment in CUNY will have cumulative negative impact on the city's economy. Of course, real investment in CUNY will bring us closer to a broader goal that we collectively share of improving the lives of students, their families, communities across the city. We look forward to working with you to deliver a strong future for CUNY. Thank you again, and we look forward to your questions.
Thank you. I'd like to know, we've been joined by Councilmembers Bachar and Wrestler. I think that last thing you said is absolutely true. CUNY is the best investment that we can make in our city, and the cuts appear, by your testimony, to be devastating to all of the programs that work. I want to first ask you about the Director Jihaz's statement at the budget hearing we had a couple weeks ago, because I asked about CUNY. He said a number of things. I just want to read you one thing he said. I asked about the cuts to CUNY and about the cuts to programs. And what he said was, with respect to CUNY in general, "The changes, we were very careful in terms of where we found the resources from CUNY's budget. If you talk to them," which I am, "they will tell you the same thing. Basically, what we did was look mostly in the area of fringe benefits and do reestimates of some of the assumptions that were made in that area. We tried to avoid touching programs as best we can." Does that sound accurate from your assessment running CUNY? Does that sound accurate?
Well, Chair, there absolutely is an impact to the programs. And there were fringe benefits taken in the November plan, and there were fringe benefits taken in the prior fiscal year. But why are there fringe benefit cushions to begin with? It's because of the sustained reduction in heads throughout the community colleges due to the pegs. So when you look at, excuse me, in the testimony that both Provost Hensel and CEO Batista gave, in programs, there were certainly cuts, but in just the heads, which basically over 400 since fiscal year '21, full-time heads, those translate into reductions in all kinds of campus operations, hours to libraries, counseling services, et cetera. So there absolutely is a real impact in the pegs. I think you heard of a few of the community colleges and the impact that you saw there. Certainly, each of the other community colleges, the other four that weren't mentioned in the examples in the testimony certainly have had similar impacts with those reductions. So that is why we appreciate, of course, the support of the council and respectfully request that those pegs are restored because they have a real impact on campus operations.
And let me add a couple of things. I mean, I think that, as you know, CUNY buildings are 50 years and older. And as we try to navigate making sure that our facilities are in a state of good repair, these cuts have really had a real impact on our custodial, on our maintenance staff to be able to sort of address some of those things that one day is a leaky faucet, and next it becomes a larger problem. So trying to address that, these cuts have really had an impact on our facilities and how we... So there's the student side of the house, but then there's also on the facility side of the house that's really created a real problem for us.
So the Budget Director was wrong. I mean, have you been speaking to the administration? Did they misread an email? I mean, it's hard to understand the big difference between what your testimony is, that programs will be cut, no doubt, and the testimony the Budget Director gave, which was that it's really just fringe. And you're elaborating that fringe was from other pegs. You mean, you did have to lower the headcount. So what is the divide here? What's going on?
So Chair, there certainly are conversations that go on all the time with OMB. I do think that, you know, again, it's what's behind the fringe cushion that you may see there, and it's really because of the sustained reduction in heads. So there is a conversation that continues to go on. But I really do think that when you look at the, you know, on the ground, at the campuses, what you hear from the presidents, what you hear from the executive set, what you hear from the faculty, is that there are significant, a broad range of reduction in services that simply did not exist prior to $94 million of baseline pegs that the community college have had to sustain. So we continue to speak with OMB. It's an ongoing dialogue, and we'll continue to clarify the impact, really, of what's being felt at the campus level.
Okay. One more, because he did state he did not think programs were cut or eliminated. And if conditions improve, they'll do an assessment to partially or fully restore. And I guess the good news is that the economy is doing better, and revenue is up since the preliminary budget. So that's good news for, I think, CUNY, given the Director's testimony.
Yes, absolutely. And we certainly, number one, we welcome the fact that the third round of pegs for the executive plan were canceled. We did note that the Budget Director's testimony certainly did have a nod towards if conditions improve, that it will be reevaluated. And our contention is, and we always say this, of course, that CUNY is really an investment. It's an investment in the city of New York. It's an investment in the state of New York. And so by restoring these pegs, our goal is hopefully not to just get back to zero, right? Our goal is to really make this an investment in the myriad of programs that really have proven success for New Yorkers.
Yeah, I would say the costs of providing students with remedial education, I think, is... speaks to the failure of our public school system and the need to invest more in making sure students graduate college-ready. You mentioned a $107 million structural deficit? The structural, $107 million? Is that right? And are all of the, the remaining stimulus funds is going to be spent during 2024?
Correct. Yes.
So that's your structural deficit. If new labor contracts are settled but unfunded at the state level, can you talk about the impact there?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for the question, Chair. So first on the stimulus funds, we at CUNY were not unlike the city of New York, the state of New York, the MTA, who also received one-time emergency federal stimulus dollars. So we're extremely grateful for that. Our usage of that was accordance to federal guidelines, some for institutional expenses, like pandemic-related expenses, some for lost revenue, some for student financial emergency grants. So really, the one-time stimulus has enabled us to continue to fill holes by the structural deficit that we've seen from enrollment declines, from unfunded mandatory costs that the university has had to absorb. So yes, we are pursuing, and certainly part of our priority at the state level, to make sure that our new... to make sure that our new contracts with our talented and dedicated workforce and faculty could be settled and could be funded for the senior colleges. It is noted that if that's not funded, the deficit could climb to as high as $300 million. So certainly, we're working on that, and we're certainly encouraged by what we're seeing, not only in the governor's budget, but also with the one-house budgets that the legislature put out. So we are encouraged. But certainly, the end of the federal stimulus dollars, because we're going to exhaust them this fiscal year. Well, what does fiscal '25 look like? We have a strategic plan. I think you heard a little bit about that from COO Batista and his testimony in terms of shared services and other savings strategies, but also continuing to double down on enrollment and retention, all the things that can bring revenue to the university. So we do have a plan, but certainly, we need to see how this budget cycle plays out. And of course, we look forward to your continued support.
Thank you. I want to touch on headcount and then get to some of my colleagues for questions. At the beginning of this year, CUNY had some non-reappointments of faculty. For example, in January, Queens College did not reappoint 26 full-time substitute lecturers. Your college has, since mid-December, not reappointed an estimated 75 part-time adjuncts and several non-teaching staff positions. Were these non-reappointments a result of the structural deficits or expiring federal funds you mentioned?
Sure. So in the case of, we have colleges of high financial concern, and we set forward an objective criteria for which colleges fall into that.
And give me, what are the colleges, and give me some examples of what those criteria are?
Sure. So the criteria is, number one, if you are projected to have a cash deficit in this fiscal year, which is three and a half months away, you certainly would be of high financial concern. Or if you met two of the following three criteria. Number one is your structural deficit is 5% or more of your resources. Number two is that you don't have enough of remaining stimulus funds or reserves to carry you out for three years. And number three is your enrollment trend doesn't match up with the revenue that you need to be able to counteract the structural deficit and achieve balance. So those are the criteria that we have. Two community colleges fall into the colleges of high financial concern, BMCC and Kingsborough Community College. Queens and York, as you noted, are two of the senior colleges that are included. And so part of what that means to be of high financial concern is that we work with you to establish deficit reduction targets and hiring restrictions. There's additional state money that will flow to help them on the revenue side and really be able to put them in a path towards fiscal stability. And then at that point, the, you know, quote-unquote designation will be lifted. And so in Queens, as you noted, there were some expense reduction actions that were taken. The campuses have a great deal of flexibility in how they achieve their savings targets. But we continue to work with them, monitor their financial plans, and continue on strategies to increase revenue, so it's not only on the expense reduction side.
Thank you. I have more questions about headcount, but I do want to get to my colleagues who have questions. And I will start with Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. On the community colleges, I know that students are really concerned about academic advisors, so I want to know the total budget. And just, you know, I know you talked about it, but what are you going to do about that particular group of very, very needed individuals, academic advisors, at the community college level?
So there's, our advisors are done in different ways on different campuses. The ACE and ASAP have specific dedicated advisors that those levels have been maintained as part of the program. But we have heard from a number of community colleges that there are other advisors for the general population, that they've held vacancies in some of those positions. And so, of course, advising is key to student success and graduation and progress toward academic goals.
Do you know how many vacancies there are and what the budget is, or could you get back to us if you don't? I have to say, the students talk about it all the time, and the lack of. ASAP is, you know, I know it's funded, but you could always use more. So it's okay to say it's funded. I heard you say that. But I would prefer that, and John would kill you if you didn't, that you need more. It's not just that it's funded. You need more. So what's this with ACE? It's not baseline? Is there somewhere to get it baseline? I assume ASAP is not baseline either, is it?
ASAP is baseline.
Okay. So how would you get ACE baseline?
Well, we hope you will consider baselining it. We created it out of a pilot that we started with philanthropic dollars. And as you heard, the results have been pretty amazing. Lehman College, for example, had a 60% graduation rate over a 40% cohort. So tremendous return on investment for that program. However, we don't have any baseline dollars for that. We will, we are committed to continue serving students that we accepted, whether or not we have continued funding, just as part of our promise to those students. And we'll have to figure out how to do that and probably make cuts to the program. But we are precluded from taking, really, any new students, or at least any appreciable number of new students, if that money is not restored to the budget.
Okay. I'm a big fan of John Jay. It's in my district. Been working with them for, I don't know, hundreds of years. But I have a question. Who sets the college's enrollment targets, and what makes it a college of concern? And can you confirm that the expected mid-year cuts could be $4.5 million? Obviously, that would be a major impact. Apparently, that was presented to the staff in December for their projected deficit. Can you update us on that information?
Absolutely. So John Jay is a college of high financial concern because they meet two of the three criteria that I mentioned before. So notably, the structural deficit is 5% or more of their resources, and their enrollment trend is not sufficient to be able to counteract their revenue needs.
What's their enrollment now? It has been 15, 20 in the past, 20,000?
Yeah, the snapshot, I think, was trending negative. Last we checked, about, I believe, like 2%. And so, you know, I think that what we're trying to do, and, 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 Councilmember, you noted that there were deficit reduction targets, and you noted that. And absolutely, that's part of what, the savings that they have to achieve. One of the deficit reduction targets for fiscal '24 is $4.5 million. And, and look, we're working with the colleges to try to identify opportunities. John Jay was one of the colleges as well that received recently-approved, unallocated state aid dollars. And so that was distributed to the college to help, you know, to help with their budget. And also, as part of that strategy, any college that is expected to end the fiscal year, three and a half months away with a cash deficit, some of those state-operating dollars could also help to be able to balance. So you get your first installment, if you will, based on your full-time equivalent headcount. And if you still have a cash deficit, we're there to help to be able to balance. But it's about a two-year strategy to be able to achieve fiscal stability. And so this list is not a permanent list. It's not a static list. It is a dynamic list. Once we know that you no longer meet that criteria, you will no longer be considered a college of high financial concern. On the hiring, just last point, part of it is hiring restrictions that we have. It's basically a two-for-one. And so we do have exempt positions, anything that affects public safety or health or revenue generating. So we're currently working with John Jay to be able to go through the list that they have and see if we can have some critical hires that are processed.
Okay. And we're seeing, to me, that's a school where forensic, which is a real hot topic right now, has a priority and one of the few colleges in the world, if not the country. So what does CUNY do to help them advertise that kind of information so that more students would be attracted, because it's a very popular focus, forensics?
Yeah, I would, just speaking generally, in terms of, there is a whole strategy, part of which we use one-time state funds for, for transformative initiatives, to do all kinds of marketing, to be able to have the colleges out there, and really to showcase all of the great programs that they have. And so that's part of it, that, that, just speaking in general and not in the forensic, but we do help with that to basically make colleges more attractive.
One other question. The governor has tons of AI money going to Buffalo-Sunni, Sunni-Buffalo. Are we getting any of that AI money here in the city of New York? Because all the news press says it should be going to colleges.
Yes.
We're going to have to get back to you on that, what we get in that.
We know we have the $75 million gift recently from the Simons Foundation. So there's private philanthropy that's coming into CUNY, but I don't know specifically.
Campus? Which campus?
To CUNY Central, to develop a master's program in computational science. And also then to look through different areas. We are beginning a strategic plan in AI that involves using analytics specifically for advising. That's one of the areas you just asked about. So that even with higher case loads, there can be a higher level of touch with routine matters dealt with through AI. So we're deeply engaged, but I'm not sure the specific amount that's coming for that purpose.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wrestler?
Thank you so much, Chair Dinowitz. We are fortunate to have a speaker and a chair who are so committed to CUNY. I firstly just want to commend the Provost and COO and all the CUNY leadership team for your exceptionally astute decision to bring on the new CFO. Sharif is one of the most talented public servants that I've worked with, and we are really lucky to have him at CUNY. So congratulations, and thank you, Sharif, for your ongoing service to the people of New York City. Firstly, could you all just break down for me the rhythm? As we all know, the city of New York is primarily responsible for funding the operating expenses at our community colleges. Compared to when Mayor Adams came into office, could you, and the FY '25 budget, could you lay out the anticipated reduction that we are facing over these three years in reduction in cuts to funding for our community colleges from the city of New York?
Sure. And thank you, of course, for the question, Councilmember, and for the compliment, of course. Of course. So, yeah, I think, I think just generally speaking, I think it's really, what really illustrates the change has been the baseline pegs of $94 million of what it adds up to in fiscal '24, $45 million of which was imposed on the past two rounds in fiscal '24.
And $94 million out of a total of?
Out of a total of about 515. So we're talking about roughly...
18%?
Well, yes, if you count some other, some other support, you know, from the city, it's about 15%. And that's what COO Batista said in his testimony.
So to confirm, a 15% cut in funding for the operating expenses for our community colleges since Mayor Adams came into office, a CUNY graduate who said he was going to be a champion for CUNY has been decimating the budget of our community colleges. We know how, well, let me actually continue. And in your, in the FY '25 budget, we are looking at a 48% cut year-over-year to the OTPS at our community colleges. Is that right? Could you break down a 48% cut in everything but staff? What are we losing? Could, I mean, have you anticipated if Mayor's cuts were to be fully implemented, these devastating draconian cuts that would decimate our community colleges? Could you give a high-level breakdown of what would we be losing at our community colleges next year if he was successful?
Yeah. So I think, I think you heard a lot about, well, first, CUNY's budget is 85% personal services, right? We are an organization of people, and we cannot exist without the talented and dedicated faculty and staff to be able to run. So...
Absolutely. But it's worth noting, since our pre-pandemic high, we're 11% down in headcount at CUNY as well. So we can't run without people. It's mostly a people-driven operation. But we're losing people because of the mayor's painful and draconian cuts, but as you were saying.
Absolutely, in terms of the impact on CUNY. And I think that when you really look at the impact, you heard it in the testimony, and you heard, you know, of a few college examples. I just want to round that out with a few additional college examples. So number one, you have LaGuardia Community College. There you have 54 positions that are vacant, impacting everything from instructional to student support services, career services, student financial aid, officers, et cetera. Moving to Queensborough, Queensborough has 53 positions vacant. And that includes every, you know, every position from faculty, from financial aid, from academic resource centers to help students access benefits, which is certainly a priority for CUNY, a priority for the council. Bronx Community College is down 137 positions. So all of these areas begin to be impacted clearly by the pegs. And, you know, again, back to the fringe savings piece, right? The less heads, the less support you need for fringe benefits. And that is where we're seeing sort of the clawback in some of these peg rounds. But when you really peel back and look at what's happening at the campus level, real significant impacts.
And I am similarly concerned about the cuts to the capital plan. If I recall from my notes correctly, we're looking at a 24% cut in funding to the capital plan. We all know, as this Chief Operating Officer testified, that the conditions on our community campuses are deteriorating rapidly. I see it when I go visit City Tech in my district. Could you, are you concerned about our ability to maximize use of all of our classrooms, for professors to have safe places to, you know, gather, for us to be able to continue to fully, have a fully functional CUNY campus system with such extreme cuts to the capital plan?
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, we are concerned. I mean, I think, I think, as I stated in my testimony, as we begin to cut, you know, the staff that actually maintains the facilities and makes sure that the classrooms, we already are challenged by, you know, our deferred maintenance and the state of some of our facilities. And we've been really focused, under this administration has really been focused, and really focusing on bringing our facilities to a state of good repair. But these cuts are having a negative impact, and trying to get our facilities there. So it is extremely challenging to make sure that we continue to maintain them. I mean, the good news that we have from our perspective is we now have the ability to determine campus by campus the state of each of our facilities. You know, the boiler at LaGuardia and Building Number Four and so forth. So we could at least do a more targeted effort to try to intervene in those. So we know it's got a lifeline of five, six months. We're able to intervene a lot quicker to be able to try to allocate the limited resources that we have. But as we continue to have our capital budget pushed back, and we're not able to really realize those resources, it allows us, it creates more complications for the facilities. And it is extremely challenging to your...
Mr. Chair, could I do one more? Thank you. I think we've all seen clearly that the mayor's cuts to the CUNY operating budget and the cuts to the capital plan are wildly unnecessary. And he's begun the process of restoring many of the draconian and painful cuts that he's implemented in just the past few months. I just have to say, from early childhood up through CUNY, the cuts to education are indefensible. And I am hopeful that this city council is going to do everything in its power to restore not just the cuts from November, but the cuts that we've seen over multiple years from Eric Adams. What I just want to ask is, beyond fighting with you on these restorations, the operating budget and the capital plan, what else can we do to better champion and support CUNY at this time?
Well, certainly, one of the answers that, I just wanted to add to your earlier question. You talked about the state of the capital, the buildings. It is difficult to recruit if there is even peeling paint and things look like there's not being taken care of. So the distinction between the world-class institution and the feeling of the buildings that you enter has had a significant impact on our students' feeling of community. And it's a particularly challenging time after the pandemic, both in terms of getting people to come in, but also to revive that really vibrant campus life that we know is intimately tied to graduation rates and retention. So that holistic perspective that, and just to add to the question of the OTPS, one of the things that's there is faculty development and faculty conferences, and being able to train for AI as these new technologies come on board. So understanding that, a cut to a program is a single thing, but the totality of the cuts is terribly damaging in terms of our ability to maintain the energy and the vigor that the students deserve on the campuses.
I couldn't agree with you more. You know, six... You know, six, I, I often come back to the recent CollegeNet report that found six of the twenty colleges in the entire country who are most successful at achieving social mobility for their students are CUNY schools. CUNY is the place that helps transform New Yorkers who are living in poverty into people with good, into, into families that have life-sustaining jobs. And, you know, as Chair Dinowitz and I have talked about quite a bit, when you look at what's happening in the economic recovery in New York City, it's disproportionately low-wage jobs that are coming back, much more so than the country as a whole. We need to be investing in the middle-skills jobs that CUNY helps our graduates realize to help bring the economy back. So these cuts may be penny-wise, they are pound-foolish, and they are devastating to the future of New York City. And we'll do everything we can to help support you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler, Councilmember Marte.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler, for those questions as far on the money. I sent a letter recently to the chancellor in regards to BMCC to get more details on the budget cuts in regards to BMCC in my district. And it stated that even though the college has met new student targets, it has fallen short on continuing student retention, about four percent down year over year. However, many of the budget cuts that we do see in the pegs are for the staffing that are student-facing, that would keep students in the school. And so we know you have done a good job at recruiting, but what's the priority and the plan to rehire those to make sure that once you have a student in, they can continue at these institutions?
Yeah, it's something that I think about every day. It's one thing to bring a student in, but it's our moral obligation to keep them there and, and, and reach them through to graduation. And so we are doing a number of things, as you might imagine. In terms of, I, I know some of the concerns are course offerings that I've heard. Course offerings have, have stayed robust, relatively robust, because we've lost more students than we've lost faculty at this point in time. And that's true of BMCC as well. And we are working hard on class sizes and course scheduling to ensure that students continue through to graduation with the courses that they need to do that, by infusing some of the processes that we're using with new technology, artificial intelligence, et cetera, to reach a higher level with frankly lower expenditures. But overall, we are, in fact, at BMCC, we are partnering with the National Institute for Student Success. And they just completed a look at every aspect of BMCC's operation as it relates to students to identify what barriers are in place from the moment of matriculation to the time they leave our doors with employment. And so we are engaging in the conversation now, specifically as it relates to BMCC, of how to eradicate those barriers and move those students toward graduation. But candidly, as we said, you cannot make up for the loss of headcount in student-facing services like advisement. It's impossible. Those are critically important to student success, and we will continue to do our best, but it is a challenge.
Thank you, Councilmember Marte, Councilmember Botcher?
Good afternoon. Councilmember Wrestler commended you for hiring Mr. Solman. I want to commend you for hiring Jeff Rotis, our friend and former colleague, who's going to be such an asset to us and to CUNY. I want to ask you about capital funding. Many council members, including myself, over the years, allocate discretionary money to CUNY, including capital money. And it's been a point of frustration over the years to see a delay in those funds getting spent on CUNY campuses in our respective districts. COO Batista, we've spoken about this, and you shared with me some of the systemic issues at OMB in getting this money approved, and even shared with us some details about projects just getting pushed into the out years, fully funded, certificate to proceed, getting pushed into the out years, and this during a time of great need with deferred maintenance on the campuses. I'd love for you to, to share with my colleagues what these issues are and how we can help, because there's no reason why fully funded projects shouldn't be happening right away, why they should be pushed out into the out years.
Well, thank you, Councilmembers. Good to see you again. Let me start out by saying that this administration under our chancellor have really, really focused on really looking at our facilities and, and this whole notion of the state of good repair. And, and I'll say that a lot because I think the idea was that CUNY had a reputation of not completing projects on time. And part of it was challenged by, by the fact that we rely on DASD and other entities. So we've done a lot to really begin to control our own destiny and, and really bring in the kind of professional staff that we needed to be able to really tackle completing projects on time. Now that we have, and by the way, that has, that has really shown results. We've improved our completion rate from when we came into office of twenty-something percent to, and, and the fifty percent in terms of completion rate. But that's not enough. I think the challenges that we're having right now is that, like last year, you allocated resources to the university. And those resources would, would push, those capital dollars would push to twenty thirty-three. So it's hard to plan to do a project if, if those projects are pushed down the years. It gets worse than that. We have projects that are ready to be certified at the controller's office, ready to complete, ready to be satisfied. And then we, we, we get those projects that are being delayed or pushed to outer years. So it's this battle where we get these great resources from the council, and now we're, we're battling, battling to try to, to, to get those projects sort of over the finish line. And we've done our part, you know, to really bring the professional staff that we need to be able to move those projects forward. And frankly, we're, we're having, we're about to have and have had conversations at the highest level with the Office of Management and Budget. I am attending a meeting to try to figure out how we could do better there, because frankly, it is extremely challenging to, to get these very hard resources that we get from the council and, and our elected officials and not be able to use those resources in a timely manner.
I think it's, it's a scandal to have capital money allocated in FY twenty-four and have that pushed out to FY thirty-three at a time when students are going to schools with all the capital needs that we've been hearing, wires dangling from the ceiling. It's just not acceptable. I'd like to be helpful, and I know my colleagues would like to be helpful in figuring this out. So perhaps as a follow-up to this hearing, we could meet about this and discuss what we can do, how we can help you advocate with the administration to get these projects, these shovels in the ground.
We welcome that, that help. Thank you.
I think last month I was at a very exciting ribbon cutting for the nursing school, for the nursing building that you mentioned in, in, in your testimony. And I think it really spoke to Wendy, what you were speaking about, the excitement and the draw. I mean, it was state-of-the-art equipment there, and it was, and that's what our students deserve. They deserve state-of-the-art equipment. I know for my former students, having a place, you know, something, something to shoot for in our, in our local colleges, where they don't have to leave if they want to become a nurse. They can stay in the Bronx to go to school and ideally stay in the Bronx to work. And so some of those projects are these great grand openings of nursing buildings. Other projects are, as was mentioned, dangling wires from the ceiling. And the CUNY's preliminary FY twenty-four twenty-eight capital commitment plan includes seven hundred thirty-eight point six million dollars for various capital projects. And so if you could separate out for us, how much of the capital commitment plan is for improving structural deficiencies? And how much is for actual investment in buildings like a nursing building? That does exactly what you want to do, Wendy.
So is your question, how, how much of those resources are going to a new building? Or how?
New investments versus fixing up the things that already exist.
Okay, let me first take out the new, new buildings first. The way it really works for us is that we get funding from the city first, and then we have to wait nine months into the next fiscal year to get funding from the state. And we cannot put a project forward until we have funding that matches the total project cost. So in a lot of cases, the, the nursing program, nursing school that you mentioned, was one of those examples, or a project that we had to seek funding multiple years in order to get it done. And that creates all sorts of delays. You have pricing, you have all kinds of challenges. Of the number you've mentioned, I'll say, I say that about half of that, half of those resources of that funding is going towards new buildings, potential new buildings, as, you know, so then we could go to the state to get matching. And the other, the, I say probably a little bit more than half is going towards the state of good repair, fixing boilers, bathrooms, and windows, and dealing with those, you know, those kind of facilities. Because frankly, it is, it is something that we need and, and the challenges that we have with our ancient infrastructure. We're, as you, as you remember, last year, we had a lengthy conversation about one school in particular, right? And, and the challenge connected to that boiler. So now we're really targeted and trying to be more, sort of more focused, because we know a lot more now about the system. So we're trying to be a little bit more targeted with that funding.
What do you mean, so what do you mean by more targeted? What does that look like?
So we, we have a sense of building by building, the state of our facility, either, either, either we, we have an ability to, we know either we need to replace it or repair. We, we have an ability to know what are the, the actions that we have to take before we didn't know. We also know the lifeline of a particular system. The, you know, boiler at Bronx Community College will know, right? That lifeline is about six months or whatever. So we're able to allocate resources, advocate for resources to be able to do an intervention before we have the problems that we had, that we have no heat and students will know with a system that's not really working.
And you have private foundation money. For instance, the seventy-five million dollars from the Simons Foundation was mentioned. I think some of that was for, for capital improvements in terms of hardware?
Twenty, twenty-five million is part of the Empire AI project that Governor Hochul has been discussing. The specific parameters of the rest of the money have not been clearly laid out at this point. But of course, the hope is to, I don't know if you have better information, but.
Yeah, no, on, on the Simon fund, there is, there is capital dollars allocated for technology that is needed for this, for this project, and investment in technology that is needed for this project to move forward. So there is, and, and then we have to do in the facilities where we're going to house this particular project, we're going to have to do some, some renovation to the air conditioning system to be able to take this very sophisticated technology system that we're bringing on board. So we have to put new, new air conditioning system and so forth. And this, I think this facility is located at City College.
I think scandal, Councilmember Botcher, was the appropriate word for the way you described capital. I want to pause on these questions. We have Councilmember Felice joining us via Zoom, and I'd like to recognize him for his questions.
Thank you so much. For some reason, I can't turn my video on. Maybe we could check in with the IT team. Actually, that's fine. I'll do it without video. But hello, everybody. Councilmember Russell Felice, I want to thank you, Chair Dinowitz, for this hearing. Also want to thank, actually, it's a long way to start the video now. There you go. Hello, everybody. Thank you, everyone at CUNY, for all the work that you do. CUNY obviously has a well-documented track record of helping students and families of all backgrounds move up the economic ladder, helping them achieve opportunities. So just want to thank all of you. I know everyone at CUNY works very hard to make that a reality. Few questions. We need to make sure that CUNY has the teachers needed. We also need to make sure that our students have access to the educational spaces that are modern, modern classrooms that, that they deserve. I'm a graduate of, proudly graduate of many CUNY institutions, including Bronx Community College and Colston Hall in, in BCC Bronx Community College, a good example of a building that looks like it hasn't received the capital renovation in, in who knows how many decades. So a few questions. Sorry if some colleagues already asked some of them, but a few questions. How many pending capital projects do you currently have? Pending capital projects related to either construction of new buildings or renovation, major renovations of new build, of current buildings?
We are about, about eight hundred.
About eight hundred. Approximately how many of those relate to renovation of current buildings? I guess overwhelming, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question. Say it again.
Yeah, about how many of those eight hundred relate to renovation of current buildings?
I say more than half of those are renovations, the facilities.
Okay. And approximately how many of those eight hundred are fully funded?
I have to get back to you on that. I believe that most of them are fully funded, but I have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Are there any projects in the Bronx that stand out, in Bronx Community College, Lehman, Hostos, Hostos Community College?
I, I'm sure they are, but I could get you the list of those.
Okay. And would you say the pegs have affected the timeline for completion for these projects?
I, I think that the, what, what I think we were, we were alluding to is the, the pushing back of the capital dollars to outer years. When we have projects that are ready to be certified by the, by the controller, it was causing some of those delays.
Got it. And how drastic have these projects been affected, the timeline for completion? Are we talking about a year, twenty-four months, thirty-six months?
I think it varies by project, but I could get you sort of a detail list of that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we can provide that information after the hearing. That would be great. Thank you so much. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Felice. I want to ask about one specific capital project. In the preliminary plan, the CUNY's preliminary capital plan is two hundred twenty-seven point eight million dollars. It's nearly twenty-four percent less than the adopted plan issued last September. The single largest project pushed out of the five-year plan is the four hundred seventy-five point nine million dollar CUNY Science Park and Research Center in Kipps Bay. Can you explain why the project was delayed? And was the decision made by CUNY or OMB?
Yeah, as far as we know, Councilmember, that, that project is not delayed. I mean, I think, as you know, well, let me, let me, let me, the, the project is half-funded by the state and half-funded by the city. The four hundred and seventy-five million dollars, it's from the state. We're already on, sort of moving forward with that. I mean, I think where we are right now is, we're in the process of negotiating an MOU with the, with the city, the Economic Development Corporation. As we, as we negotiate that MOU, it would allow us to begin to spend some of those, some of those resources. As far as the city budget, I leave that to the Economic Development Corporation, but we haven't heard anything that this project is, is being delayed. A matter of fact, we're constantly having meetings connected to this project. So I haven't heard anything that. We're still on target to decant this space, to move out of the space in twenty twenty-five, and, and construction to begin, close to that. They, they're in the process right now of hiring an architect. We just completed the master plan. So as far as I know, the project is, is, is on target. Actually, we're pushing it to get it done a lot quicker.
That's good to hear. So Spark Kipps Bay is in the capital plan, five-year capital plan.
I don't know about the cities. I, I will have to go back and look at it. You, I think I'm asking, as far as I know, the project is on time. The, the, the state allocation is in our budget. We have, we have resources that we allocated. I think the way we've sort of talked about this project is beginning to use some of the state funding first, and then the city project funding will come in later. But as far as I know, we've hired architects, the designs are going to begin on this project, and we, everything is moving along fine, as far as we know.
Thank you. I want to go back to, over the contracts, to talk about contracts for one second. CUNY's fiscal twenty twenty-five contract budget totals, twenty-six million dollars for seventy-seven contracts. I just want to talk about, focus on two of them. One is, are any of these, about Bronx Community College. It was reported that they don't have dining services, have a nice cafeteria, no contract. So any of those in fiscal twenty-five related to Bronx, I'm sorry, Hostos, I believe, Bronx Community College dining services? I think they're both having issues, actually.
Yeah. Let me, let me sort of give you a two-part answer to this question. Every campus at CUNY, we have some sort of food service to be able to address. I think the pandemic has created some challenges for the university, because some of these companies don't have the volume to be able to, to really make the. the, the resource, the money that they need in order to, to really to maintain the business. As far as the Bronx Community College and Hostos and LaGuardia, there, there, there is a joint RFP that's going on to the market, uh, this month, uh, for, uh, food service for those three colleges. Uh, we're, we're trying to really pull colleges together to be able to attract a company so they could have the kind of volume that they need in order to make the returns on the investment. But we've tried through grabbing gold, through different, different mechanisms to be able to leave, have some sort of food services at, at the colleges. But it's, it's not really ideal, but we're obviously trying to make sure that, um, each of the colleges have something for, in the meantime. But in those particular colleges, they don't have, uh, a full service, we're pulling resources to be able to do one RFP.
And is that, are you, have you budgeted for that in the, is that one of the contracts in FY twenty-five? Have you?
No, it's not a, it's not a budget kind of a situation. It's more of a revenue generating, um, so it's going on to the marketplace and, and really recruiting, uh, a vendor to come in and provide the services.
And when you do the contracts for cafeteria, are there certain hours the cafeteria is slated to be open?
I mean, the ideal, the ideal situation is the cafeteria open when, when the students are there, so we could provide the kind of services that they need.
Let me, let me, students are there late into the evening. And I'll speak specifically this month, some of the concerns that I've gotten. If, if, it's Ramadan and many students, Muslim students are fasting throughout the day. And the one thing they want to make sure that they have access to as the sun sets is, is food. And when I'm talking about the hours, in part, specifically during those hours, during the evening hours, do students have access to food? Or will it in this contract?
No, I hear you. Each, each contract works with the, the local college to accommodate whatever their needs are, whatever the hours that they need in order for, to operate. That's really sort of the way the contract works, so, um.
I, I mean, although I would expect as CUNY Central, you would provide guidance to the local colleges, right? To work with the local community?
Yeah, the, the, the contracts are not centrally led contracts. They're individual college contracts. What we do at Central is try to provide them the way to procure those contracts and essentially to allow them to be able to go out and, and, and receive, um, more bids centrally across the, the city. Uh, but most of those contracts are individually run by the individual college.
No, I, I under, well, in this case, the three colleges. Um, and I understand they're individually run. What I'm asking is to improve campus life, to help recruit, to support the energy and vigor students deserve. Are you, just quoting, uh, are you providing guidance and support to the individual colleges? Or are you hoping that they make the right choices and provide the right guidance?
No, 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 we, sorry. Uh, we are providing support to those individual colleges. About three years ago, the, the university, um, tried to get a system-wide, uh, food service contract. Because of the pandemic, we, we procured a contract with a company called Colinar and the contract, because of the pandemic, was not, was failed. So now we're trying a different approach and trying to do more smaller contracts and provide guidance to those colleges to help them make sure that they, they get the right kind of, um, food vendor contract that allows for, uh, to be able to provide food service for the different population of students that we're, we're servicing, um, within that college, you know, to make sure that we're, we're accommodating the different kind of food needs there. So we're providing as much guidance as we can.
RFP is released, you said this month or next month?
This month.
And what's the timeline on that?
Uh, probably about ninety days to, to get, you know, bits back and then, and then there's, they review those. So hopefully by, by, uh, next count, by the next, um, uh, school year, we'll be able to have a full, a running food vendor contract in those three schools.
All right, well, I hope when it comes to food, just like everything else, we recognize different students, different ages, different, uh, backgrounds have different hours. Uh, and it's not like when, when I was at school with the, the cafeteria is only open during certain hours. Uh, I hope that it's reflective of, a, as you recognize, the, the diverse student body that we have here in New York City. Um, one of. The, the current fiscal twenty-twenty-four spending on daycare for children is nine-to-two-six-thousand-nine-seventy-five dollars, and it's seven-hundred-ten-thousand in fiscal twenty-five. Um, so how many slots in daycare do you have allocated in this current budget? And do you have a waitlist?
So in FY twenty-twenty-four, we had a budget of four-point-seven million. Uh, three-point-two came from the state and one-point-five, thank you, from the city. And we hope that that budget will remain level. We have seven-hundred seats, about, um, somewhere between six-hundred-and-fifty and seven-hundred seats at any given time. And, uh, there's seventeen child, childcare centers across, and so there, there's always waiting lists, but they are, they are primarily serving our students as opposed to community members and faculty members.
How, how long is the waitlist?
That I do not know, but I can find that out for you.
And, and do you, um, do you predict with the current budget, you'll have to cut seats?
No, we are not projecting any changes to childcare based on the budget. And one thing that we have implemented is to do, uh, significant assistance with students to go to different childcare centers on different campuses that have availability. Sometimes somebody's house is closer to one versus the other. So, uh, it's really, we look at the seats across what's available in the different boroughs.
I, I love the colleges, I love the faculty, I love students, but I think my favorite thing to do is to visit your childcare centers and, and read with the kids. That's one of my, uh, favorite activities.
Except you will go home with a virus, with little children.
Councilmember, can I come back to the Spark project? And I want to give you an update because I just got, uh, information.
So did we. Please do. You first.
It's in Ulope right now. The project is in Ulope. And I, and design, um, the design is, is, uh, design development agreement has been entered, Ulope, uh, and this, uh, public scope and it happened today. That's what I, and EDC is working on a CP right now.
But I have here that a hundred-and-fifty million dollars from twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-eight has been pushed out to fiscal, uh, to fiscal twenty-twenty-nine, a hundred-and-fifty million of those dollars. So how does that align with, uh, what you're sharing right now?
Well, it's part of a, I mean, it's part of a larger project, right? So I'm not, I don't know which, did they, are they pushing back the CUNY funds or are they pushing back, is the CUNY funds?
City funds.
Yeah. Uh, it's, again, we're, we just enter into a Ulope and I have not heard anything connected to the capital budget. Yeah, okay. So we're.
I was just gonna say that it's our information that the, that the Spark project will be exempt from, from any additional pushes, uh, for the exact, uh, capital. And when you look at September to January, there was actually parts of the project that were accelerated. So clearly, I think we need to compare notes and to figure out exactly what is happening. But we have been told that it will be exempt from any additional push exercises.
Okay, we will compare notes, uh, but until then, I want to turn it over to Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you. I always ask this question. As part of that project, there's still a hole in the ground near MSK. What happened to that hole in the ground? Who, does, do you own it? Does OMB own it? EDC own it? What are they doing with it?
Yeah, uh, as you know, Councilmember, this, that project was tied into our overall MOU that was signed with the, with the city many, many years ago. So we're unbundling that MOU and ultimately with that, that, that MOU, um, which we recently took to our board, uh, and now it has to go to the EDC board, this, this city in New York will own the, the, the MSK, the site, uh, the so-called hole in the ground. And CUNY will give up its rights on that and, and what we will get is, we will get the Spark project.
But don't you lose a lot of money in that? Because that hole in the ground is going to be worth quite a bit.
Uh, I think that ultimately, we believe that this project will better serve CUNY. We get over almost a billion dollars' worth of investment, both from the city and the state, to allow us to build a state-of-the-art nursing facility for Hunter Campus, be able to move a school of public health there and a couple of other uni, CUNY, uh, medical-related us, uh, uses and, and an additional hundred thousand square feet of blast space for Hunter, for the Hunter Campus. So we think that, that it is a win-win, uh, for CUNY. And, uh, as part of that deal, um, a, a project that has been sort of, had not moved for almost a decade, uh, because of lack of funding, we believe that we get actually a lot more.
It's a controversial topic, as you know. So I, I'm not sure that I agree with that, but okay. Gutman, what's happening with the North Building and Gutman? I know right now that North Building is well-used for, uh, legal services for asylum seekers. But what's going to happen with Gutman and the, that building? Is there any project progress on that?
Yeah, uh, Councilmember, we had a, an RFP out in the, um, out in the community to try to, try to see what the, uh, sort of best use for that project, sort of a, sort of a P-three, uh, kind of a initiative. Uh, we're still sort of evaluating those proposals to determine, um, what's, uh, what's in the best interest of CUNY. Uh, with regards to, uh, to Gutman, um, we're, we're, we're trying to determine, um, sort of where does Gut, does it make sense for Gutman, uh, to be there? Or does it make sense for Gutman to be in another location? Because ultimately, what we want to make sure is that that college has the ability to, uh, continue to, uh, to grow, uh, in terms of its students. So, uh, we want to make sure that we're not, we're making a decision that allows that college to continue to grow. But, um, I, I think that very soon, we're going to have a good sense of, of what's going to happen with North Hall.
Okay, but that's a state site, right? It's owned by the state, is it?
It is.
Okay, so the, uh, it could be affordable housing. Because I must, if I have any say over it, I want to make sure it's got affordable housing, either above, uh, university purpose or not. But I know in the past, you know, everybody wants to make money, so they end up with, uh, high income. But the governor has a lot of money now to pay for, quote-unquote, "affordable housing on state sites," quote-unquote. So there's a state site, the best schools, why not make it affordable housing? Are you thinking about that?
Well, Councilmember, we're not, we're not in the housing business, so we, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to, we're gonna continue to, to look for sites.
Your students and your faculty need housing, it's not just you.
I understand, and I, and I hear you. And I think what we're gonna do is continue to look for, um, uh, opportunities to better serve the university, where we could continue to do our mission. Uh, if, if, if one of our projects has a housing component to it, so be it. But right now, our main focus is to try to see how we could continue to monetize or look at our facilities to be able to really use it, uh, for, for our mission. And really, that's really the focus. Um, with regards to the, the housing piece, we'll leave it to those developers, whoever it is that's gonna bid on this project going forward. And I'm sure, as I've known you for many years, that you will be a, a voice that will be heard when it comes to this, but I leave that up to you.
Thank you.
The hole in the ground, Councilmember Brewer's favorite subject.
It is, something's wrong with it.
Or least favorite. I don't know how to describe it. I do, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Botcher in a sec. I do want to touch on, um, one issue that you raised in your testimony about confronting hate. Um, as you know, two years ago, we held a hearing in this committee related to antisemitism. Since that point, you have made some investments, um, in bridge building, you've made investments in a centralized portal, you've created, as, as per your testimony, diversity, equity, inclusion hub on the website. Uh, a number of steps have been taken. And at the same time, there is still a problem with bigotry, and we have seen especially since October seventh, a rise in antisemitism and Islamophobia. There have been a number of events, uh, on CUNY campuses, which I would say at best are troubling. Two, I guess, two main questions. One is, in the testimony two years ago, it was said, well, the answer to speech you don't like is more speech. Fine. Has CUNY Central made any efforts, or what efforts have been made, rather, to promote more speech or more balanced speech to counteract some of the, again, at best troubling increase in speech we are seeing from both students and faculty on various CUNY campuses?
Of course, we are one of the most diverse institutions and one of the most diverse cities in the country, so we are not strangers to the problems that are national at this point. But we have worked incredibly hard to try and both allow speech of our faculty, students and staff while also protecting against harassment and bigotry and hate. Uh, as you know, we received a one-point-three-million, uh, last year from both the state and Jew to address these issues. And it fostered an incredible amount of projects across the campuses where they had the option to identify specifically what they felt was responsive in their community. So to give you a, a few examples, uh, City Tech had an "I am a Jew" and information campaign, an art exhibit focused on bringing attention to the diversity and presence of Jews in the college community. Queens College had a dismantling and combating hate conference in April twenty-twenty-three, addressing all forms of discrimination. BMCC used that money to do Social Justice Week, which ran from April twenty-fourth to twenty-eighth, featuring panels, workshops and other events that explored the theme belonging together, learning together and growing together. And, uh, we, we also then had an additional twenty thousand this fall to the campuses to continue this work, so that it's not, you know, the, the challenge is not, not to have a one-off, but to have a continuing dialogue that continues to grow and engage in difficult spaces. We had many conversations across the campuses that had both an Imam, uh, and, and a Jewish rabbi with students to sit and really delve into some of these, uh, conversations to try and understand the challenges from the other perspective. Uh, we also had Jewish cross-cultural art exhibits, fellowships, bystander intervention training, which I think is particularly helpful. Um, a student leadership certificate series to help folks know how to, uh, address these issues when they arise in the moment that they arise. And just recently, in twenty-twenty-four in January, the College of Staten Island hosted an all-day symposium on combating antisemitism. So, um, coming up very shortly, the, the Graduate Center will host a colloquium entitled "Critical Theory: Jewishness and Antisemitism." So I don't want to.
Surprised you didn't mention Hostos Photography Exhibit. It's not on your list. That's fine.
There are so, so many examples, and obviously, I'm just identifying a few, but it, it is robust in terms of the conversation. And the central office is looking to find faculty experts in these spaces to have ongoing intellectual academic conversations that set context for folks outside of the political heated conversations that are taking place right now.
So I, I would like to talk, not at this hearing, because I don't think it's the right forum, but to talk further about what the balanced approach to speech really is. I'm not advocating for stopping any of the, the faculty, uh, events, but again, some of them are, feel very one-sided. And again, your, the CUNY's answer to, uh, to this issue was more speech, which is totally understandable and fine. But again, since, uh, two years, when it comes to that faculty aspect, the sort of educational, uh, a- aspect, um, I do want to delve further into what that balanced approach looks like and what CUNY Central is doing to ensure that those speakers are being recruited to, to provide, um, I guess, I guess, a broader and more diverse perspective of what's going on and how that's impacting Islamophobia and antisemitism here in New York City.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to sit down with you and have that conversation.
And, and lastly, Title VI. What, do, do you have, you have a Title VI coordinator at CUNY? Is that per campus? Is it CUNY Central?
We do not have a coordinator at CUNY Central, I don't believe. Uh, I believe it, there are diversity, chief diversity officers on each campus that coordinate responses.
Are the, so every single campus has someone who's in charge of Title VI complaints?
I believe that's the case. I could be getting that wrong based on, uh, the response. I believe so, yes. It is not at Central. It is done on the campus level.
Okay, I, I mean, there are a number of things that have happened since last fiscal year. Again, October seventh was a huge point at which we saw a flare-up in hatred in antisemitism and Islamophobia. And we also saw increased, uh, reporting of Title VI complaints, in part because of actual increases and in part because the Biden administration didn't make updates and changes and clarifications to Title VI. Um, so I would also like clarification on what, how CUNY has responded to the Biden administration's updates to Title VI. I think we're getting an answer.
Yeah, so the way it works now is when the reports come in, uh, to the best of my knowledge, they are, they are given to the chief diversity officer who has access to that as well as the president on every campus. And so the chief diversity officer is responsible for investigating those complaints. is responsible for investigating those complaints and taking appropriate action. But it is within the contacts of each campus. We do collect information centrally, but there is no central designated person who is responsible because the facts are on the campuses and therefore, the chief diversity officer is closer to the ability to investigate the circumstances.
Okay, as you are considering your budget, I think it's worth considering that colleges are seeing increased complaints. One of the issues was, it takes many months for students to even get a response. And students from all walks of life are really struggling with increased hate across the board. And that seriously needs to be addressed. I'm going to turn it over now to Councilmember Botcher.
Hi. One of the amazing CUNY schools in Council District III is the School of Professional Studies. It's a school that's been doing very innovative work on remote learning, in particular, for working professionals and others. That school is one of the nine colleges of concern that have been identified and cuts have been proposed. Can you be a little specific about letting us know why the School of Professional Studies was identified as a college of concern? And what are the cuts that are on the table for the School of Professional Studies?
Sure, so thank you for the question, Councilmember. So School of Professional Studies is on the list, which, again, I want to emphasize, it's not a static list. It is a dynamic list. And they've been showing real signs of progress. And so they were on the list initially because they met two of the three criteria that I mentioned. Notably, the two are their structural deficit was 5% or more of their available resources. And the enrollment trend that we saw was not commensurate with what was needed to basically climb out of this designation. And so, but they are showing signs of strength in the review of their latest financial plans. And by the way, you know, at CUNY Central, what we do is, for those colleges, we meet monthly and constant communication to go back and forth to see progress on their financial plans. And so they are one of the nine that have performed well with the actions that they have taken. So we anticipate that the future looks brighter for the School of Professional Studies.
I would add to that. Part of CUNY Online is developing a nationwide marketing campaign. A lot of the programs, SPS in the past has had to market their own programs. This new campaign allows all of their online programs to be elevated and marketed to a wider audience, and they are seeing an uptick in their enrollment. So I really believe there are better days ahead.
The enrollment trends have been positive. From what I understand, SBS, they've seen an increase in enrollment. But you're saying that it hasn't been enough of an increase to meet the criteria?
Correct. Right, exactly.
But in the latest filing, the numbers are going in the right direction, at least with respect to finances. You think that this might be, this school might be taken off the list of colleges of concern, perhaps?
I'm saying that, yes, we've seen significant improvement. And we've seen sort of the actions that they are taking. You know, again, with CUNY Online as a component. And so we're seeing ways that they can not only increase, you know, the revenue side of the equation, but, you know, also the kinds of actions they're taking with the hiring restrictions. We're beginning to see that slow, but without really much impact on the educational outcomes. And so we do anticipate that, once they're reevaluated, we'll be able to make some progress there. But as with all the schools, we are meeting on a monthly basis with them. And once we see improvement, again, it's not a static list, dynamic list. If you no longer meet one of the criteria that was established, then certainly, you will no longer be on the list.
When will those decisions be made?
Yeah, I think that we're monitoring, certainly. We want to make sure what we see out of this budget cycle, right? I think it's important to see not only from the state side, but also the city side. And so I think not only have the targets been established, you know, without the beginning of the spring semester. So we're seeing what enrollment looks like. We do quarterly financial reports. So we're seeing what that means for revenue. We're going to see what kind of, again, aid comes from Albany. We'll see, of course, what happens here in terms of funding for the community colleges. And then I think it's an opportunity to reassess.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. Now, as you are finishing your remarks, I just realized between you and Councilmember Brewer and Councilmember Wrestler, I think I've known all of you the least amount of time. And they've all known you for about many years. But it's, I want to thank you all for coming today. And of course, Jeff Rhoades is sitting in the back over there. Thank you for coming today. There are, it's very clear, CUNY, the city has a lot to do in terms of ensuring CUNY gets the funding it needs so that our students and faculty and our facilities have the support that they need. And there are a number of items to follow up with, which I look forward to doing in the coming weeks. Thank you very much. I will soon call the next panel.
Thank you.
Oh, no worries. I was like, I was like-- I literally wrote, I was like, didn't get that question.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be calling the next panel momentarily. For our first panel, I'd like to call up James Davis, Dorian Block, and Megan Ahern. Is Megan here? Before you begin your testimony, please state your name for the record. And we'll begin with President Davis.
Good afternoon, Chair Dinowitz and committee members. My name is James Davis. I have the privilege of serving as the president of the Professional Staff Congress, which represents 30,000 faculty and staff at CUNY. I want to thank you for your continued advocacy on behalf of the students and the faculty and the staff at CUNY. I will just say that without your intervention last year, the fiscal strain on the university that we've been discussing already today would have been much more severe. There's a number of really positive indicators at the university right now. And the previous panel spoke to some of them. I want to begin there. Enrollment is rebounding. We've seen this spring enrollment is up over last spring. That continues a trend where last fall's enrollment was up over the previous fall. So the pattern and the trend seems clear. The applications for fall 2024 are tremendous, hundreds of percentage points larger in October 23 than they were the previous year. So that's really encouraging. And there are a number of legislative initiatives, including, most spectacularly, the CUNY Reconnect Initiative that Speaker Adams and this council supported that have brought thousands of students that have some CUNY credit, but that haven't completed their degree, back to the university. So this is tremendous. And the waiver of application fees and a number of recruitment strategies have yielded additional applications. And so it's encouraging to see the direction that things are moving on enrollment. The road back from COVID, nevertheless, is long. And it's been pretty bruising for the faculty and the staff. Many years of disinvestment have made the university vulnerable, as you heard from the previous panel, vulnerable to the vagaries of enrollment. So high dependence on tuition and tuition offsets means that the university really struggles fiscally when there's a dip in enrollment, as there was during the pandemic. And you heard from the administration about the measures that they have taken to try to close what they describe as structural deficits. And those have been extremely difficult for faculty and staff, especially at those nine colleges, so-called high financial concern. We believe that the administration's response in trying to manage the financial challenges has been too overly panicked and preemptive. And it's put unnecessary strain and stress on my members and made things very chaotic for the students. But nonetheless, we join them. Is my time up already?
Yeah, why don't you--
Can I finish my sentence?
Yeah, sure thing.
I'll go straight to my recommendations. Thank you, Chairperson. Our request would be to restore the $94 million in pegs that the previous panel spoke about, to also, to fund CUNY Reconnect and ASAP. Those are proven programs. And that would cost, our estimate is, that would cost $35.5 million. And also to screen students for the Fair Fares Program. We know that other panelists and subsequent panels are going to speak about free Metro cards. And we certainly recognize the need for students to have wraparound services to complete their educational journey. So again, thank you for fighting for PSC members, for CUNY students, and for the opportunity to testify today. Look forward to responding to your questions.
Thank you. Dorian?
Good afternoon. I'm Dorian Block. I'm the senior editor at the Center for an Urban Future, an independent think tank focused on creating a stronger and more inclusive economy in New York City. I'm testifying today on behalf of CUF's editorial and policy director, Eli Dworkin. Thank you to members of the committee for the opportunity. To help more New Yorkers get ahead in today's fast-changing economy, as we've heard on the previous panel, there are few investments more worthwhile than boosting college and career success initiatives at CUNY. In recent years, the Center for an Urban Future has published several reports focused on what policymakers can do to strengthen CUNY's vital role as a springboard to economic mobility. Investing in CUNY isn't just a win for students. It's vital for the economic security of New York City and state. We strongly encourage the council to fully fund CUNY in the 2025 budget. And in addition, we recommend four key areas where these investments can have the greatest impact. First, I align with my co-panelist, is renewing the highly successful CUNY Reconnect Initiative. Nearly 700,000 working-age New Yorkers have obtained some college credits, but no degree. 700,000. In just two years, the CUNY Reconnected Initiative, thanks to the tremendous commitment of Speaker Adams and the city council, has helped more than 26,000 students return to college and re-enroll. The majority of these students are Black and Hispanic and women, and most are over age 24. At a relatively modest cost of just $5.4 million last year, CUNY Reconnect has succeeded in helping working-age New Yorkers complete credentials while boosting enrollment. And this program deserves to continue and grow. Second, expand CUNY ACE, which we've also heard about today, to help more senior college students succeed. Today, only 36.2% of full-time students at CUNY senior colleges graduate in four years. Fortunately, the CUNY ACE program has begun to change this, providing students with a mix of academic advisement, career development, scholarships, textbooks, and transportation assistance that has proven to boost graduation rates by as much as 40%. However, limited funding has restricted that program to serving just 3% of all eligible students. We urge the council to invest in growing CUNY ACE, which helps students and maximizes the city's other investments in student success. Number three, we recommend boosting CUNY's career success programs. CUNY still has work to do to ensure that CUNY degrees lead to lasting economic opportunity. Fortunately, there are several CUNY programs which are succeeding in launching students into well-paying careers in the tech sector, healthcare, finance, and other industries. But these programs are generally operating at a very small scale, and budget cuts threaten their continuation. To ensure that CUNY is as effective as possible in generating economic mobility, the council should support the growth of these initiatives. And my last, the fourth recommendation, is to strengthen the Crucial Site Program so that every future teacher can be trained in computing education. At this time, fewer than 5% of all new teachers are prepared to teach computational thinking, the ability to ask questions, organize data, solve problems with computers. This training gap is preventing many students in New York City public schools from receiving early encouragement in computing education and from pursuing computer science in high school, college, and beyond. With the council's support, this program can expand to reach all 11,000 aspiring teachers enrolled at CUNY every year. New York's elected leaders are nearly unanimous in expressing the desire to expand economic mobility and making the state's tax base more resilient. No institution is better positioned to deliver on that. Thank CUNY. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Megan Ahern. I'm the Program Director for NiPerg. Thank you to Chair Dinowitz and the Council's Higher Education Committee for the opportunity to testify today. CUNY's testimony was pretty clear on the impact of the peg cuts being the reduction of positions from dozens at some schools to over 100 at others. And these cuts will and have continued, have and will continue to create fewer hours of operation for libraries, cafeterias, student resource offices, advisement, counseling. Students will tell you it's already difficult to get classes that they need to graduate, and now that enrollments are beginning to bounce back, the peg cuts undercut CUNY's ability to bolster services that attract new students. They also critically create an atmosphere of uncertainty where students are having to rearrange their lives just a few weeks before the semester starts because of cuts and faculty layoffs. We urge the council to fight for a final budget that rejects the peg cuts and adds, as my colleagues have said, $35.5 million for new academic advisors in expanding CUNY Reconnect, ASAP, and ACE. These programs work for retention and graduation rates, and they're worthy of expansion. On top of that, every student that goes to CUNY deserves the kind of wraparound services that these programs provide. Also want to bolster what a number of other people have said, and that mass transit is an extension of CUNY. The need to address transit affordability is only getting more pressing, and we thank the council and Speaker Adrian Adams for your stalwart advocacy for Fair Fairs. And we agree that and echo calls to do more eligibility reviews and helping students through students' resource centers that are currently experiencing cuts to apply for and get the benefits that they already qualify for. We'll go a step further to fight for, advocate, and urge you to expand Fair Fairs to 200% of the federal poverty level, up from 120%, and to include all CUNY students in eligibility regardless of income. And then I just wanted to mention really quickly, CUNY testified about an emerging master's program in AI that could explore, among other things, AI for advisement to offset human advisors for routine matters. And we really would underline the importance that the council follows up with CUNY to ensure the involvement of students from the start in the creation of such programs to get the students' perspective and input on things such as what would be a routine matter, for example. We hear from students right now that advisement is a one-size-fits-all approach because their caseloads are so high. We wouldn't want that to be exacerbated. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll point out two things. One is, again, speaking of these funds not as expenditures but as investments, as I think all three of you correctly pointed out, and CUNY correctly pointed out. I'll go back to my first question that I asked CUNY administration, which is the Director of OMB in his testimony said, "They're really just cutting fringe benefits, and they're not aware of any programmatic cuts." But in your various interactions with CUNY, your various roles, have you or your members or the people you interact with felt cuts to CUNY? In other words, is the director's testimony accurate?
The cuts have gone much deeper than to fringe benefits. I think CUNY administration's own testimony laid out a few numbers at a few community colleges. If it's okay, I'll read just two brief examples from a couple of my colleagues from BMCC. One is in the mathematics department. She expressed that, "We are really feeling the cutbacks. In my department, one of the largest at BMCC, we're not being allowed to replace our full-time office assistant. The department has approximately 150 faculty, but it's currently operating with only part-time staff. To top it off, we just added a new data science major that will earn money for BMCC, but we don't have the staff to support it." One of the licensed mental health counselors at BMCC told me that restrictions placed on hiring have meant that for every three vacated positions, one can be considered for replacement. How are advisors, counselors, and financial aid officers supposed to continue serving students if positions that are vacated won't be replaced? How are we, as a college, supposed to continue to advise students, process financial aid applications, or see students who are seeking mental health counseling if professional staff are not hired? So these are anecdotal responses that I think correspond closely to what you heard from the CUNY administration, which is that the cuts have, in fact, gone much deeper than nibbling around the edges. My colleagues are really stressed out. Morale is terrible, and a lot of them are doing the work that had previously been assigned to their colleagues who have left and not been replaced.
All right, I know--
I'll just, yeah, I'll just add, there's also, you know, for campus staff that do thing, do resource work, like helping students apply for SNAP and other city agencies that they are already eligible for, that's literally money just being left on the table for these students. And sometimes the hurdle really is just learning how to go through the application, how to interface with HRA. They're doing it for the first time for these benefits. And CUNY has a student experience survey that sometimes even students that have applied for a benefit and maintain eligibility just don't re-enroll. So we know that the need is there, and sometimes it's just that one connection to have an office that's dedicated to that.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
I'd just like, you know, thank you for your testimony from PSC. I really liked the fact when you said, "Fund ASAP and CUNY to the maximum," in other words, for all. So is that 35 that you're talking about, .5, that would fund ASAP for all in addition to Reconnect? Is that what that number means?
Yeah, that's what it would take to raise the ratio of academic advisors to the ASAP ratio. And when we talk about it this way, you know, look, this should just be what college is, right? We talk about ASAP, it's been such a profoundly important program for so many people, and it's wonderful for the students that it serves. Outside of CUNY, the national recommendations for ratio of academic advisors to students is available, and there's no reason in New York City why we shouldn't be able to achieve that ratio. That's just what college should be for all the students at our community colleges.
Okay, well, that was when I was trying to ask, what about academic advisors? And I got sort of a non-answer by saying we don't have enough money for those who are not in ASAP. And it was very frustrating because you really can't get through without it, certainly not in a, you know, you can't get through in a timely fashion, and you have to work, et cetera, et cetera. So, but this number would cover everything, is what you're saying, the 35.5?
Right, and I'm still unclear, and maybe you know the answer to this. I thought last year that this council worked really hard to get some earmarked funding for academic advising that I'm not sure went to academic advising in the university.
I thought so also, so that's why I'm confused.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call the next panel, Sally Matu, Monique, Monique Thomas, Brenda Vargas, and Cynthia Suarez-Espinal. Thank you, Sally Matu. We could start with you, and for the panelists, welcome. And before you testify, please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Councilmember Dinowitz. My name is Sally Matu Dumboya, and I serve as the Chairperson of the CUNY University Student Senate and the CUNY Student Trustee. I am a proud student at the New York City College of Technology, and I stand before you today to talk about the students' budget needs. I represent all 225 CUNY students, and today is a very special day for us as we've been advocating for different things for CUNY. In terms of infrastructures, you are no stranger to the fact that when students get in some of their facilities, some of their classrooms, they're afraid that some roofs are going to fall over their heads. On specific cases of bathrooms, they are so bad that no amount of cleaning would make them utilizable, and some students are still going in because they have no choice. But today, the most important topic for me is a topic of transportation. Transportation is a significant barrier for many students. The Chair of PSC, James Davis, spoke about the fact that ASAP, ACE, and other programs, their benefits are huge contributors of student success. However, right now, not all students are eligible for ASAP, so not all students can benefit. A recent survey conducted by the University Student Senate, which is the organization I chair, had about 849 student testimonies where they were sharing that they had to sometimes not be able to eat in order to purchase a MetroCard. They shared that they had to sometimes spare. It was difficult to balance having to buy MetroCards, having to buy books, or having to afford school at some time because of the chain of events with inflation and all of that. A particular student shared that, "Sometimes I don't have money to pay for transportation because maybe in the week I spent all of my money paying bills." And that's a student from Bronx Community College. Recently, I have discovered with my colleagues that situations at CUNY with transportation in particular has gone so bad that we are trying to do it ourselves, which I think is unacceptable. At the University Student Senate, we are spending $6,600 to purchase 50 MetroCards for our student leaders just so that we can advocate for our students CUNY-wide. In terms of food access, it is Ramadan right now. I myself am an evening student, taking classes from 6:00 to 9:45 PM. There is no food services during the daytime in the building where I am. I am in the architectural building, which is removed, let alone the nighttime. I'm also the president of my student government, so we started a food initiative that cost us about $10,000 to buy 50 food boxes for all of our buildings, for all of our students, regardless of religious affiliation. We also spent another $10,000 to buy coffee for our students during the daytime, which we started since last fall. I believe that when students feel like they have to take out of their own pocket to feed other students, it becomes unacceptable because student activity fees are just for that, activities for students. The possibility of having an education and a campus life should be made possible by those who, hence, we put our futures in by deciding to have an education, not by us to use itself. And then we have the issues of mental health, of students with access disabilities, and housing, and I could go forever on how important it is for you to push CUNY and to push the mayor and to push this council to give students the funding that they need in order to succeed. Higher education is a choice, but it is a choice that benefits the students, their families, but also our great city of New York. Thank you.
Greetings, Chair Dinowitz, and members of the Higher Education Committee. It is my honor to be here speaking today before you and members of the New York City Council. My name is Monique Thomas. I am a long-term, full-time CUNY student since '05. I am a single parent, household of two. And also, I'm here to just testify on the behalf on how hard it is to be a student for CUNY and, you know, surfacing challenges within attending college and, you know, and just basically maintaining a grade point average, which is kind of hard these time of days because we face a lot of challenges with funding, you know, and without that funding, it's impossible to actually continue educational studies. Being that I'm a Brooklynite resident, it's very difficult with public transportation. You know, as far since the pandemic, it's been even, you know, harder, you know, as far as funding and having MetroCards. I have experienced that plenty of times where I didn't have coffee to go to school. And by that saying, you know, going to the token booth clerk and asking, you know, for a ride, it was difficult, you know, because they'll either let you through, some let you through, and some don't. Then you have the officers you have to deal with, you know, as far as, you know, letting you through the gate and, you know, you're letting them know you're going to school. It's very hard, you know, it's not easy. Therefore, at times, I didn't, I wasn't able to go to school because I was afraid I wasn't going to get led through the gate, you know, and that dropped down my GPA a lot for me not attending courses for that matter. Also, on the behalf of me proceeding with school due difficulty times when I was employed with the city and as a former NYPD school safety, continuing my educational career goals as of, you know, political science and so forth, I also had the opportunity to gain, you know, some kind of interest with having, you know, utilizing with fundings as opposed to being ambassador for our school. 2023, earlier in March, I believe, yeah, March, I was Model Senate. We were able to go to Albany, and I did a speech on the ERA. It was very, very interesting. So as I'm saying, you know, with the fundings that's needed, we don't need the fundings to be cut. We need more funding to provide for us, CUNY students, and for the future students ahead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Monique.
Good afternoon, Chair and committee members. My name is Brenda Vargas.
Oh, sorry. Good afternoon, Chair and committee members. My name is Brenda Vargas. I am the Director of College Discovery at Kingsboro Community College, and I'm here with my colleague.
Good afternoon. I am Cynthia Suarez-Espinal, the Director of the College Discovery Program at Bronx Community College.
We want to thank you for this opportunity to present this testimony to you. The College Discovery Program was established within the community colleges by the Board of Higher Education Resolution on February 17, 1964. Its major goal was the admission of students from a spectrum of academic standing below the level of that which is conventionally regarded as inappropriate for admission. Originally conceived as an experimental five-year program, College Discovery thought to demonstrate that students who were then being excluded from college because of existing admissions criteria could, with the proper supportive services, attain a college degree. The College Discovery Program marked its 60th anniversary within CUNY on February 17 of this year, 2024. Recognized by the New York State Department of, recognized by New York State Education Department as a New York State Opportunity Program, CD operates under the framework of Education Law EDN 6452. This program is designed to support students whose income falls below 185 percentile of the federal poverty level guidelines and whose academic performance is below an average GPA of 80. Despite CD students facing significant challenges, the retention rates for CD students at all six community colleges in CUNY for the year 2019 cohort were higher than the general student population. And both the two-years and three-year graduation rates for CD students were higher than the general student population by five and eight points respectively. CD is an access program committed to providing holistic support to its students. This support encompasses financial, personal, and academic counseling, academic support services, and summer bridge program. Since its inception almost 60 years ago, CD has continued to be a beacon of hope and a catalyst for the transformation in the lives of countless CUNY students who, due to academic and socioeconomic barriers, might otherwise be denied the opportunity to pursue a higher education. The CD program is an educational initiative that operates at six community colleges in CUNY. It receives funding from the city 92% and the state 8%. However, over the past decade, the program has seen a significant 32% decline in CD students, dropping from 2,068 to 1,000 students. This decline cannot be attributed solely to the nationwide decrease in higher education. in higher education enrollment and disruptive learning. Budget constraints are also a factor. The program budget, which includes administrative costs and financial aid support for students, has not kept up with contractual increases in personnel. This increase had risen by thirty-five percent over the past decade, accounting for fifty-eight percent of the average CD budget of five point five million over the past ten years. And I'm just going to bring to the closing because I know my time is up. In order for CD programs to carry out their mission of providing vital support to the most academically and financially vulnerable students as well as those with the greatest educational needs, it is essential to secure additional funding, specifically baseline funding for the program for year twenty twenty-five. Investing in CD is an investment in the future of our state, ensuring a more equitable, prosperous, and educated society. And we included some data there to show our numbers.
Have it up here, thank you.
Thank you. In closing, I just.
You just speak into the microphone and then say your name for the record?
There you go.
Thank you.
In closing, I just wanted to read a blurb from a current student at Bronx Community College. Elizabeth Qualte Rojas, who is graduating this May, says, "My experience as someone who is part of the College Discovery Program at Bronx Community College has been the most wonderful experience I've had in my two years in college. Coming to college as the first in my family to pursue a higher education is scary and challenging, knowing that I am creating a path for future generations in my family. However, the College Discovery Program erased my doubts and fears by providing me with guidance and support that made it less challenging. During the summer program in twenty twenty-two, I got to experience the dynamics of what a day-to-day college class looks like. They showed us how to annotate while reading and provided us with genuine feedback. Also, not to mention the incredible advisors, peer leaders, tutors, and the entire staff. They've been an incredible support in my education and in learning how to navigate through college. They taught me how to access Blackboard, CUNY First, create my BCC email, schedule my classes, complete my FastFor application, and make sure I complete and meet all the requirements. The moment I walk into the office of CD, they give me a warm welcome. The environment there is friendly and I have an excellent relationship with my advisor. They are always making sure I'm doing well in my education and reminding me to schedule meetings with my advisor. The events CD has always been the best. Throughout the CD, throughout CD, I met a couple of friends there, which helped me feel less lost and lonely. Overall, I would say I'm very pleased to be part of the College Discovery Program with their support and financial assistance, making my journey a lot less difficult and meaningful."
Thank you. Salimatu, I have just one question. You mentioned a number of things in your testimony that arise from disinvestment, like not being able to have a bathroom that could be used, a cafeteria that is, where food's not available. Are there, if, are there other impacts of disinvestment that you've seen inside the classroom or outside the classroom that you'd like to just speak a little more about?
Yes, I would like to expand on the consequence on mental health advisors and even academic advisors. As President of Student Government at CityTech locally, I hear these stories every day. I'm having to take classes that I don't need because I didn't have an advisor, or maybe my one advisor had too many students they had to deal with. It was just a mess. And this, the fact that students have sometimes to pay money or to take classes that they don't need plays with their mental health because they're having to spend more time than they need on campus, and they start performing in a really bad manner, and then it causes problems. I have a personal example from one of my peers from student government that I'm not going to name. This affected him so much that now he had to take a break from school, which affected us a lot because we knew that some things that he was mentioning, the campus couldn't fix themselves because they were consequences for not funding. But due to his mental health issues, these are things that he didn't necessarily understand, and it affected him to the point where he was frustrated because he wouldn't, couldn't graduate on time because of taking extra classes. And now, he will not be graduating when he needs to graduate because this caused mental health issues that he has to fix before he can complete his degree. And of course, he couldn't get that help on campus because, again, mental health advisors, not enough. It's short amount of people for a lot of students that need help, and the students are not getting enough services. So, mental health and advising, you see it in the classroom all of the time. With our peers, people that we don't know, we hear these stories in the hallways. It's, it's a lot.
Wow, our, our city seems to be, or the administration wants to balance our city's budget on the backs of the very students who need the most investment, and our students are suffering as a result. I'd like to thank this panel for testifying today and call the next panel. As a reminder, if you'd like to testify in person, please let us slip with the sergeant at the back of the room. Gustavo Garcia Flores. You may begin, just state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Councilmembers. My name is Gustavo Garcia Flores. I am a student at the City College of New York. I'm currently in my sophomore year. I would like to mention that us students at City College, we, we need more, more, more investment and no budget cuts. I, as a student myself, I would like to mention that the, these budget cuts that were brought up, they, they affect us a lot because, especially clubs on campus, because. Because right now, on our current student government is proposing a budget, a student activity fee increase of eleven dollars. And that is going to affect us a lot because that's more money that we have to pay out of pocket. Most students that I spoke, I've spoken with have told me that they oppose this increase in the student activity fee because they don't think that it's fair for us students to pay more out of pocket as a result of the, of us not receiving enough funding from the city. I would like to mention that, from my personal experience, clubs on campus are currently under, are currently underfunded because, um, there seems to not be enough, like, budget, like, coming out of the, the city and CUNY. I myself, as the former president of a club on campus, the C C and W Soccer Club, I feel that for clubs, we need more investment. And not just clubs, I would say that for our college, the facility seems to be falling apart, especially in the North Academic Center, or as we call it, the NAC Building. Usually when it rains, the, it leaks a lot on campus. And it's very, it's very, it's very hard for us because we have to deal with walking through a building that is, is pouring, is, is going to flood because as a result of all of that, you know? And to finalize, I would like to say that I hope that my testimony today brings to your attention that us students, we need more help instead of for funding to be taken away from us students that, who needed the most. Thank you.
Gustavo, what clubs are you in at City College?
I am currently in the Latin American Engineers Club, also known as La Esa. I used to be a member of the soccer club on campus. I was the president for one year since last year in, in October, when I funded the club as a freshman student.
When you founded it?
Yeah, I funded it.
You started a club, that's very impressive.
Yes.
And so now you're in the Latin American Engineering Club?
I've been a member of that club since freshman year.
That's wonderful. And is, and you're still a member of that club?
Yes.
Are you a member of other clubs as well? By the way, I, I imagine engineering takes up a lot of time. So I don't imagine you're in multiple clubs.
Say, like, only those two clubs, really.
Yeah.
I left the soccer club due to personal reasons that I need to take a break and focus more on my academics.
Are you an engineering major?
Yes, computer engineering.
So, in addition to taking the engineering courses, you're in the engineering club? You must really love engineering. And what, and what do these clubs mean for, how are the clubs different than the, the classes? I mean, if I were taking engineering classes, that would seem good to me. What's so special about the club?
Which club?
Engineering.
Engineering? I would say that La Esa has allowed me to, like, form, like, connections with companies and, like, get access to resources that I would need, especially as a minority student majoring in engineering.
Well, another reminder, thank you, Gustavo, another reminder that our schools are not just about the four walls of a classroom and the academic component, but as you said, the, the connections and building relationships. And as Salimatu mentioned, things like MetroCards, mental health, and food. Gustavo, I want to thank you for your testimony today, and thank you for joining us at the hearing.
Thank you.
On Zoom, we have Emily Campaverde and Kadila Tusila. We're going to start with Emily Campaverde.
Time's starting.
Um, hi.
Hi. You may begin.
So, um, we need this because, so we can learn about our, what we're learning. And we can also use it for our teachers since if they're on it, we can, we can, you know, they can buy us stuff so we can do experiments about, um, what we're learning. For example, if we're learning about, about, like, say, science, they can buy us money and they give us money so she can buy us the stuff that we need to learn about, maybe the rocks on the space. And they also purchase us the, the stuff, like, a museum trip to the space so we can learn about more about it.
Emily, I'm not sure if we lost you or if there's some connection issue, but I had a little trouble hearing you on this end. I want to thank you for your testimony and remind you that you can submit testimony, written testimony as well, if your verbal testimony got cut off. I'd now like to call Kadila Tusila. Hello.
Hello. Greetings, Chair Dinowitz, members of the City Council Committee on Higher Education. My name is Kadila Tusila, and I am a second-year student at Gottman Community College, majoring in Human Services. I currently serve as the President of the Colleges Abilis Club. In addition, I serve as a delegate to CUNY Coalition for Students with Disabilities, knowing our CCSD, an advocacy group representing the interests of more than ten thousand self-identified CUNY students with disabilities. I am testifying before you today in support of CUNY's two-point-three-million operating budget, requesting for services for students with disabilities. The city of New York's, the city of New York has never provided any consistency support for campus accommodations for students with disabilities. This might sound unbelievable, but it is the truth. CCSD would like to thank Chancellor Matos Rodriguez and the city's, and the university's leadership for being proactive and requesting public support for the hiring of accessory staff to provide basic disability accommodations at our campuses. CCSD also requests that the City Council and the Mayor consider approving an allocation of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for CUNY eliminated our campuses program that provides access to higher education for students with intellectual disabilities. I urge the members of the City Council to finally invest in CUNY students with disabilities during its fiscal year twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five budget deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and I couldn't agree more that there needs to be significantly more investment in facilities and programs for our students with disabilities. As many people here know, that was my career before I was in the City Council, was a teacher for students with disabilities in our public schools. And unfortunately, it is very believable that a lot of our CUNY facilities are not accessible to people with disabilities. So, thank you for your testimony today. If there's anyone else on Zoom who would like to testify, please indicate so with the hand raise function. Seeing none, I would like to thank everyone who testified today at the CUNY Preliminary Budget Hearing. It is very clear that the mayor's proposed cuts will be devastating and have been devastating to the very programs that support the students in our city, the very programs that provide an economic ladder for our students here in New York City. The greatest engine of social mobility here in New York City is CUNY. And CUNY deserves investments, not divestments. Hearing is closed, thank you.